Order. First item up on our agenda is our approval of our consent agenda. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes from our five seventeen twenty twenty-two regular city council meeting? Were there any questions, corrections, or comments regarding those minutes? Okay, and then we also have vouchers today for approval in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-three cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding? And then, third, we have an appointment to the board of zoning appeals, and that's Nate or Nathan Dool. And his name is moved forward for your approval as part of our consent agenda. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted.
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're now moved into our initial public comments opportunity, and I do not see any members of the public online or present, even though we have guests. And so we will dispense with that, and I think it might be behoove us to introduce our guests. And so, first of all, I'm gonna introduce the the stand-in for city attorney Andrew Kovar, which is his team JT Klaus from Triple Wolf and Garrettson. JT, thanks for being able to cover. Appreciate you being here. And Matt, I'm gonna let you introduce your guests.
So we got Chris Conrady and Brendan. He's Glee Sick, they say it right?
He's sick.
Gee Sick, sorry, from Conrady Insurance. They're here to present on Midwest Public Risk. So gentlemen, wanna go up here? And they've received copies of what you sent me, Brendan. Okay. Yesterday. Yeah. Oh, yeah. A little easier to follow.
Thank you very much.
Chris, is there one more?
There is one. There's two more. Yeah, so as I said, my name is Brendan Giesek. I'm with Conrady Insurance Group. We're an independent broker in Newton, Kansas. We're a team of about thirty-two. We, as an agency, kind of specialize in public entity. And that includes healthcare, schools are a major thing we do, and also cities. Midwest Public Risk is a member-owned, member-governed, risk-sharing pool specific to public entity in Kansas. And more specifically, Kansas cities. So what they are trying to do is to build a culture. Basically, a group of camaraderie among cities in Kansas to be able to lean on each other if there were to be a catastrophe. But also provide loss control services to the city on behalf of the city, since you are a member owner. Things like law enforcement liability training, different sorts of safety training, cyber trainings. They also have things like a legal liability hotline that you're able to use free of charge. What's if you were to have maybe a, maybe even a board claim, employment practices claim, law enforcement claim that you think is coming, you can talk to an attorney before, free of charge before getting that started. So lots of, lots of good things there. I won't. I won't bore you with the nitty-gritty of the insurance details unless you have specific questions. But what we've been able to do here is significantly broaden your current limits while also being able to bring cost savings to the city. And so, for example, with Midwest Public Risk, there is a pool limit of five hundred million dollars for property. And for the liability side, they have a five million dollar limit with six million in the occurrence. Currently, the city of Pillsbury has a one million dollar limit with two million per occurrence. Yeah, sorry. Also, on the cyber side, and I should mention the self-insured risk, so the what the pool is backing each other for is the first five hundred thousand dollars of the claim. So it does comply with the Kansas Sports Act. Any, the first five hundred thousand dollars of any claim, the members are paying that deductible as a group. And then anything that exceeds five hundred thousand dollars, they're going to the reinsurance companies that are providing those larger limits of five hundred billion and five million. Kind of makes sense. If you flip to the very back, that tab that's called premium summary, kind of laid out nicely here. From the property to the inland marine to the crime. Property, for example, your current deductible for all other property claims is a thousand dollars. Now, it would be a thousand dollars with Midwest Public Risk. Your current wind hail deductible is twenty-five hundred dollars. Your wind hail deductible with Midwest Public Risk would go up to ten thousand dollars. As you can see, the values are the same. We did not see that you have any flood or earthquake currently. Typically, that's excluded on standard forms, so we did not see it endorsed onto your current policies. So we don't believe you have it now. You would have a twenty-five million dollar limit for each of those with a fifty thousand dollar deductible. Down to the crime, you currently have bonds with, can you help me, who is that through Farmers Alliance?
Yes, Farmers Alliance.
Okay, you currently have bonds for your employees for crimes, for Farmers Alliance. Midwest Public Risk kind of tackles that with just a five hundred thousand dollar limit for all of those lines below. The deductible's five thousand dollars, and it does conform to all of the Kansas statutes and regulations in regards to crime and how you need to be bonded as a city. Flipping to that next page, page thirty-three. That's where that shows in general liability, your million dollar each occurrence, two million in the aggregate. We have a five million dollar each occurrence limit, six million in the aggregate with Midwest Public Risk. Same with the law enforcement liability. Cyber, there's a lot of question marks there. We did get your cyber policy. We just think like to get this page updated. But you have a million dollar policy with cyber now. But a lot of the sub-limits with the typical EMC cyber policy tend to lack. We were able to bring you a policy with a company called Cowbell. They are, they are specific to cyber liability, and they were able to broaden those sub-limits pretty drastically. The ones I tend to focus on are regulatory fines and penalties. Your PCI fines and penalties, those are all at a million dollars. And your social engineering, which is the most common cause of a cyber claim for a city or county, that's a hundred thousand dollar, that's a hundred thousand dollar supplement. And as you can see at the very bottom, kind of the, what you've all been waiting for, I'm sure you are currently paying a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. A hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars for your insurance package. Midwest Public Risk and the cyber is a hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. So we were able to bring some significant savings to you guys. Chris, am I missing anything? I know I kind of, I don't want to take up too much time.
I think when you think about a program like Midwest Public Risk, what you want to understand is that this is something that's been curated so that all Kansas cities of significant size or even small cities can adopt themselves to it and get the broadest possible coverage attainable. It's like the city of Hayes is an NPR member, Dodge City is an NPR member, Windfield's an NPR member. And what the program administrators have done is gone to the marketplace with their reinsurance relationships and get the broadest possible coverage that cities of, they say once population gets over a hundred thousand, this is just not a great fit because a lot of what they're doing in terms of lowering costs by retaining risk together as a group, some of those cities can just do, you know, but this allows us to get some of the risk management advantages that a large city gets by banding together. That's, that is the whole principle.
How many cities are involved?
Currently, so let me preface this, but Midwest Public Risk started in Missouri and moved into Kansas. Missouri has over a hundred and sixty cities in the program. Kansas, I believe, has forty-two. We, as an agency, have taken, have taken well there this year. Thirteen, actually.
Yeah, and Midwest Public Risk has existed for forty years. And their financials are available to anyone that wants to review them. But they have forty million dollars in unencumbered assets to basically cover these five hundred thousand dollar retentions.
So the whole group includes the Missouri, then? You're not just Kansas, it's not just these Kansas groups that are sharing, it's the whole group?
So, yes, and from the big picture of the reinsurance, yes, both groups are sharing those limits. But it is NPR of Kansas and NPR Missouri, two separate entities, both comprised of board members, sub-members. The board is comprised of members, and then there's actually an NPR that oversees, just NPR that oversees both of those. It's comprised of Kansas and Missouri board members. But yes, good question. Those limits are the same, but technically two separate public entities. Midwest Public Risk itself is a public entity. It's, it's a chapter twelve. This is a, this is a, for a seven-one. Start date, NPR's annual renewal date is seven-one. So you're kind of coming in right when they would start. It would go till six thirty-one next year. The, what it takes to get this found is a little bit different as opposed to traditional insurance. We would need a board resolution passed, an acceptance form signed, bylaw signed, and then their board, the NPR Kansas Board would actually approve you coming into the pool prior to seven-one. That's all. Any other questions?
You might explain the difference between this and traditional insurance. We have traditional insurance now. This is a pooled risk, so it's not a traditional insurance model. It operates differently. So could you kind of explain some of the finer points of that?
I'm gonna let Chris do that.
I mean, it's really not fundamentally different than traditional insurance. It's basically big deductible insurance. The program deductible for property claims and liability claims is five hundred thousand dollars. So the money that the program has accumulated, that is what is used to cover cities' losses up to five hundred thousand dollars. There's no pass-the-hat type dynamics. If you have a claim that's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar hail loss to a roof, there's no, well, Windfield doesn't want to chip in their portion. No, it's all been preemptively funded through the actuarial accounting. Those losses are paid. The beauty of it is, under five hundred thousand dollars, we do not invite in the oversight of an insurance carrier to scrutiny or the future punitive underwriting for having a claim. I mean, that's really why this works, because we say up to five hundred thousand dollars, we just want the insurance companies to stay out of it. If losses exceed five hundred thousand dollars, then the pool blanket limit is five hundred million dollars, which far exceeds the total property exposures of any of our municipal members here in Kansas. You know, so I mean, really, when you think about it, when you're in an inflationary environment like we're in now, I think your traditional insurance policy has a seventeen point eight million dollar limit, which maybe when you renewed, that was the right number. And then maybe ninety days later, it's not enough insurance anymore. And then maybe waiting a whole year for another renewal gets even scarier in terms of inflation eating up your, you know, claims covering value of a policy. One of the nice things about a pool like Midwest Public Risk is, once you join, your problem-solving limit becomes five hundred million dollars, just like all of the other members when there is an occurrence. So maybe the next question would be, well, what if two NPR members are hit by the same tornado? It's, you know, then together, there is five hundred million dollars to solve that problem. Does that, does that answer your question about why? It's, it is not unlike how you've been doing your work comp for years. You are in a pool for work comp called Kansas Municipal Insurance Trust. And what NPR seeks to do is bring those same purchasing advantage dynamics to your other property casualty coverages. Work comp, I mean, when people go into KMIT, they never leave because cost-wise, it's very efficient. Service-wise, it's very proactive. NPR is a very similar experience. When people join, it's sort of like a forever home.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. I was confused. You said something about a board resolution with bylaws. That's not how a city in Kansas functions. What would the city council be?
Oh, I guess the way NPR works, it is a board resolution, which really means it shows in your minutes that the board approved. Taking a PR call. We will take a copy of those minutes. There's also an acceptance form, which is this page.
Not yet.
And then the bylaws.
Okay, the concept of board resolution bylaws are kind of foreign to Kansas Municipal. The city council. They don't adopt the bylaws. Bylaw, they govern by ordinance. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just a little confused by the terminology when you, when you mentioned it.
Kansas Municipal Trust kind of operates similarly. Chris, do you have?
Yeah, I, it's weird. Because NPR does call it a board resolution, and that's always been a head-scratcher for us, too, because you travel the state, cities have commissions or councils. But on their, joined your agreement, it does say, it could be a vernacular error. I don't, I don't know. The resolution suggested language itself is something that is provided by NPR, so we should probably just get back to you.
Yeah, I mean, it should be subject to review and approval. My, my concern, Mr. Mayor, is that Missouri does have boards in their cities. Different, some do have bylaws in Kansas. We don't govern that way. I just didn't want you to.
Well, it's got to be, it's got to be, it's got to, to pass, pass whatever muster the state requires from us, certainly. And we'll defer to your, to you and Andrew to help us understand what that is.
What would you need from us? We can get you a copy of the bylaws there.
We just need a copy to review everything. I don't, I want to say, were you approving it tonight?
No. No, there's no action tonight.
There's a copy of all the suggested forms plenty of advance so that we can make sure that it's a fit for what the.
This is a seven-one.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to happen pretty quick, it sounds like.
Yeah, meaning, yeah, basically had it scheduled in for the twenty-first.
Yeah, so.
If there's something you wanted to do.
Yeah, so the twenty-first is totally fine. We, we've actually, I spoke to Mike Sedell, the president of NPR this morning, and their board already has time, so it's inside the last week of June to, to approve these new members.
I, if we're going to discuss taking any action, I'm gonna declare a conflict of interest, and I'll, I'll leave the room, and I'm gonna turn the chair over to our, our president of the council. So is that fair enough? All right.
So we're not gonna take action today. It's just discussion.
Yeah, it's discussion here. And, you know, we've been talking about it for a few months, and I mentioned that we'd be bringing, bringing a proposal for you. Again, we still have to go through all the process and vetting it, but the idea was to get this number in front of you so that you can have an opportunity to look at it. You know, obviously, there's some, some savings there. If you wanted to switch to Midwest Public Risk, the trade-off there is you do have higher deductible limits for some of those things, particularly wind and hail. That's probably the highest thing. You give more coverage, which is nice. And I think the resources that Midwest Public Risk and talking to some of their members, talked to the city of Sterling, city of Windfield about it, they, they're pretty happy with the services they get in addition to, so some of the things that Brendan mentioned about, you know, loss prevention things, some of the training elements, that's, that's a little bit more robust than what we see from EMC. EMC is, is the, really the biggest carrier for municipal insurance, really one of the only options in Kansas. So everybody's got them. We've had them for years. Kind of get what they give you, which isn't much, honestly. The one thing I would note is that we do get a dividend check from them, or we have, I guess. It's not guaranteed. We do get a dividend check from EMC every year as part of our insurance policy. That roughly, last few years, has been about twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars. So taking that into consideration, you know, you can, you can't guarantee that every year. Have a bad year, won't see it. But it is something you have to take into factor, too, so that savings shrinks a little bit if you take that into consideration. So. It's an option, I guess, and so we wanted to make sure that that was fully vetted and have an opportunity for everybody to ask questions about it and kind of understand what it is.
Notice you have a lot of training here. Wanted some of this training. Do we ask you, that you carry on from there, how this is actually work?
Yeah, so, yeah, well, I assume with Midwest Public Risk, you just contact their, one of their people in the front here, and I can't remember who the person is.
So, yeah.
Signed to that.
So Jason.
Jason McMahon.
Jason McMahon is the director, risk management director. I would also, also be the agent for you. So I'll kind of, I'm a taper grad, so I'm actually here a lot, so I can kind of proactively work with you guys and kind of get a sense. Midwest Public Risk, I will say, they work a little bit more directly with their members as opposed to traditional insurance. So it's a little bit less hands-off for us, but I prefer to keep it hands-on and be able to kind of work with you guys a little bit more intimately and know what's important to you so I can bring that to Midwest Public Risk and help build programs for you based on what, what's all we need, based on your needs at that point.
So, yeah, if, if there's some training in there, then we felt like we wanted to, and even if you wanted to attend it as a board member, well, as a council member, you could do that.
Yeah, I see some of this training here looks like it might be good.
They'll come out onsite, their employed staff, or sometimes they'll do sort of a reach-all, right? Maybe everybody to, some lineup kind of situation for chainsaw training or something.
That is one of the things. I will also note they do have an annual conference at Branson every year that you're able to go to. They don't take care of the travel there, but they do take care of the food. There's a lot of, they bring a lot of really cool guests and speakers, and they have trainings onsite there that you're able to kind of choose which ones you may want to attend. And they really are trying to, to build a culture around, you know, camaraderie within cities, safety, being a long-term home for your risk needs.
Any other questions?
So we need to get you the resolution that they recommend. We need to get you the governing documents for the program. And would you like to see the actual, what they call memorandum of coverage, which is akin to the policy that every city gets endorsed onto?
Yeah.
It's a master.
The master.
Agreement that everybody gets. So we'll get you those three documents, but you, you can understand that sometimes we, we do this and cities are like, not interested, you know?
Yeah.
And then it's like, all right, well, then we won't bother you with those next three things.
Right.
Do you want, do you kind of need a poll here quick to understand?
Yeah, I mean, if you guys are interested in it, we don't, we don't even. That you're interested in.
I would be.
Yeah.
I would be, too.
Like to explore it further, yeah? Okay. All right, then we will get those documents from Chris and Brendan and then ship them over to JT or Andrew. I think Andrew's out for the rest of the month.
You can never tell he went to Mexico.
Yes, he might get stuck. May get stuck. I'll send him to JT.
He's supposed to be back on Wednesday.
Okay. We'll see. You'll know today if that's gonna happen. Yeah. Yes, okay, so we'll get those over to our friends at Triplet, and we'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting, so.
I'm good.
Excellent. Guys, thanks so much. Thanks, guys.
He must have got, that was, that was my brother's class.
Okay, we're now ready for our business items. First item up is ordinance thirteen fifty-one, conditional use for an Airbnb at one oh seven West B Street.
B and B at B Street. So the public, step back. Planning Commission had a public hearing for the proposed Airbnb at one oh seven West Main on the twenty-sixth. We had nobody from the public. We did all the publications as requested. We direct mailed to everybody who's required to be. We had no public comment with regards to that for the surrounding landowners. So no one spoke against that permit. So the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend moving it forward to the city council. We've done several of these. We did one earlier this year in January. We've done, feels like four, I think, since I've been here, so. Pretty common use. It's, you know, it becomes an Airbnb. This one will actually be posted on Airbnb and VRBO, so this, this will be a little bit more prominent than some of the other ones that we've proved in the past. But there, there really appears to be no, no issues with this. And it's just so you have awareness of where this had, this property is, it's between Main Street and Ash Street on B. So there's really only two houses on that street, on that side of the street, and there's two on the other side, too. So it's pretty, it's kind of a narrow area in between two major streets, so it's not exactly what I would describe as a quiet, isolated neighborhood either, so. But the planning commission's moved and recommends approval with that, and the staff don't see any reason not to approve that.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve or to adopt ordinance thirteen fifty-one, conditional use for an Airbnb at one oh seven West P Street, and authorize the mayor to sign. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman, by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the council. Councilman, by.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Motion is approved for zero, and ordinance thirteen fifty-one is adopted.
We approved one of these, and we have for the last, probably dozen or more. So what we do with this is we approve a waiver based on the recommendation of our auditors to waive certain generally accepted accounting principles, which is the gap part of it. And that gives us our, our financial statements in totality and provides the most reliable version of what those are, what that is, because we don't necessarily do all the generally accepted accounting principles when we do our day-to-day accounting. So what this is, it just authorizes the auditing team to, to do that in accordance with the normal, the normal gap provision that they, they usually go with on waiver on this, so. Just really, it's, it's pretty routine business for us on this one. We do it every year. We're actually a little late to do this one this year. We normally do it a little earlier in the year. Our auditors will be onsite next week. Yeah, Wednesday, Thursday next week to kind of finish up the audit, and the audit's a little later than it normally is, too, this year, so. Yeah, we're just asking for approval to do that for the twenty-twenty-one financial statements.
Mr. Mayor, the risk of upsetting that part on that resolution, it has you waiving the requirements of seventy-six, eleven, twenty-eight. I am almost proof positively sure that it doesn't exist and that your waiving is seventy-five, eleven, twenty-eight. So if you adopt a resolution, you think it should be subject to the correction of the statutory reference. I, I, I don't want to, like I said, I don't want to upset a decade of.
Certainly.
Pretty sure when you actually waive the requirement that the statute is seventy-five, eleven, twenty-eight.
Oh, yeah.
They might have changed it, but I've been around a long.
It's stated here, isn't it, under, whereas?
Yeah. The resolved part of this, it's seventy-six, which is.
So there's a correction that needs to be made.
Yeah.
Okay. So are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh one, gap waiver for twenty-twenty-one audit, subject to the change as identified by our, our council. Somebody care to make that motion?
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Do we poll on a resolution? No, I think a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We're now on to employee health insurance. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we are a little bit off on our schedule with this as well, but so last year, when we moved to the Freedom Claims Management Inc. plan, we've been able to retain about sixty thousand, maybe a little high in premium savings, premiums compared to our previous plans. It's worked very well for us this last year. And so Blue Cross, because of our plan success, and I think because of the changes in our group, we've had so many retirees and we've changed kind of the general makeup of our group so dramatically that it's kind of changed how we are looked at in insurance. Blue Cross and Blue Shield has offered to do a level funded plan for us, which is not age-banded. So it becomes a little bit different product. And it works kind of similar to the way we do things with Freedom Claims Management in that we pay a certain amount of premium with the level funded plan to Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And then it collects over the year. And if we don't end up using all that, then we get a portion of it back. So it actually kind of works like.
So this Freedom Claims is no longer.
No, no, Freedom Claims is still in place.
Oh, they are.
Yeah, it's still be in place. It's just the Blue Cross plan that we use is kind of the umbrella coverage change is able to change a little bit here to what I consider a better plan. It's actually a lot cheaper and we have potential to gather some savings back on that too. The only real change that we would be making is to do getting rid of the Blue Cross Blue Shield dental plan and doing it through Freedom Claims Management. That would be something we can, we can do that. Dental claims are extremely predictable. So it's not something that needs to be necessarily run through Blue Cross and Blue Shield. We've estimated based on kind of how we would fund that to net back another ten thousand dollars in savings from that based on the cross plan. So the renewal for the level funded plan is one hundred eighty-six thousand annually compared to the two hundred and thirty-one thousand, one twenty-six ninety-six from the current option that we're using. So we actually see a nineteen, nineteen point four percent reduction, which is great because we got rid of the age banding thing. It's also created some interesting things with how our rates have been structured. In the past, what we've done is to have, you know, the city pay a hundred percent of a single plan, which the cost of that has gone down significantly based on this change here. And then that would get applied to everybody's premiums for the other levels of plan. So say employee spouse, employee children and family, that would get applied to that. And then the city would pay fifty percent of that. But the way that was done in the past is was sort of manufactured internally because the age banding, they basically gathered it all together and made a rate out of that. So that everybody kind of paid the same and weren't, you weren't paying your individual rate that way. So what that's done is created some interesting situations where now the rates would actually, even though we're saving money, the rates would go up for certain sets of those people if we were to continue doing it fifty percent. So what we would suggest doing and part of, part of the kind of discussion tonight is to keep everything flat, freeze it for this year. I talked a little bit with Lou about that. It feels a little strange to be saving a lot of money as a plan and then passing higher premiums on to the employees, especially when we're talking about, you know, how do we, how do we handle employee benefits and inflationary environment? How do we keep people at so much turnover? A lot of it based on retirements, but how, how do we, how do we manage that? And so what we're recommending would be to freeze it and then catch it back up to get it back in line with the policy over a course of three years. So that would gradually go up or change based on how we go from year to year. So that's one of the things we want to do. And what we were actually able to look at doing was changing the deductibles too a little bit, reducing the deductible from fifteen hundred to a thousand for individuals, two thousand for families from fifteen hundred to three thousand. We're also able to lower the maximum out of pocket for people from, lowered it to two thousand for individuals, four thousand for families, based on that data from what we've had last year. That actually would only cost us about twenty-four hundred dollars, which felt like a pretty good trade-off for benefit-wise. Really, what we can say is that the reason why we're able to do some of these things and we'd be able to actually continue to save money even by approving the employee benefits is because of the group has changed so much. And the plan has performed so well over the last year. So you know, we also, I think we've mentioned in the past, just as a note, that we talked about the Kaman Insurance Pool, again, another pool option. We looked at them as, at their rate, and they were actually significantly higher than what this, what this option would be. So at the end of the day, it was twenty-six percent higher to go with them. And so we've opted not to, to down that path because it just didn't make any financial sense. So kind of looking at the whole, the whole package here. So we'd be changing the benefit plan design a little bit, actually making it a little bit better, moving to self-funded dental package. And then potentially freezing the rates for employees in twenty twenty-three. And we would still net back, net back a savings of about eighty thousand dollars that we would retain with the plan structure we have versus a fully insured plan like we were previously doing with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So it actually continues to work pretty well. Our claims reserve, the actuarial amount that we need to have is about seventy-five thousand dollars. And that would cover what the insurance provider would estimate that our, we would max out on our plan. So about a hundred and twenty-five percent of our maximum liability is where we want to be. Hundred forty thousand is basically double where we need to be, which would be close to that and the savings for the next year if everything kind of continues as it has been. So in the case of that, when we hit to the hundred and twenty-five percent of the maximum liability, we basically reduce our payments into our own reserve fund. So we've got that back, that savings into the funds from which it would be coming. So it's complicated. I understand that. But what we're, what we're asking for consideration is to approve the renewal with Blue Cross and Blue Shield at the level funded plan at a cost of one hundred eighty-six thousand, two thirteen forty-eight. And then also to keep the rates for employee contributions the same as last year, which are listed at the end there. So that's, that's one way we can continue to, to keep employees' compensation in a good line.
Where was the line between for Freedom Claim, when Blue Cross, what was their deductible?
Their deductible on this is.
Does Freedom Claim?
On this specific one, it changed slightly from last year. An individual last plan year was seven thousand, deductible, a family was fourteen thousand. This year it's reduced slightly. I think the individual is six thousand, six and a quarter, maybe.
So we have even a little bit less exposure through Freedom Claims than we did previous.
Yeah, you can attribute all this to the fact that we've gone from a group's average age of like fifty-eight to an average age of thirty-two, I think, is what it is. And so, you know, that, that's one of the benefits, I guess, of, of having all the turnover we've had is we've got a lot younger.
Any other questions?
We'd be saving, what did you say, eighty thousand dollars?
Yeah, roughly. I mean, that would be, that's kind of what it would look like if we were able to have a similar year. Now, of course, that's, that's completely up to what happens in the plan design. So if, you know, we have.
Everybody gets sick.
Everybody gets sick or, you know, we get a bunch of cancer people who max out, that goes down.
Right.
You know, based on kind of what we've seen, this is what we would expect.
The other questions, comments? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the, you're asking for approval of the recommendation?
Yeah.
Which is the rate structure as printed here and renew Blue Cross Blue Shield level funded plan at a cost of one hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars, forty-eight cents. And keep the rates for employee contributions the same as last year. And those are identified below. Would somebody care to make that motion? Councilman By moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And we are now skipping over item four, which is not quite ready for tonight. So and we'll move on to the Community Plaza Concrete discussion. Mr. Styles.
Yeah, thank you, sir. So we've been working on the Community Plaza project, obviously. We've talked about the restrooms. We've proved those kind of independently. We've purchased the spray park equipment through the funds raised privately, and there's still about sixty thousand, sixty-three thousand left in those privately raised funds, which also be brought into this project. But we're at the point now where we kind of need to approve some concrete purchases. We do have the street, you'll notice the street's torn up over there and we'll get to work on that once, once the water. When it gets a little less rainy and we can pump, we've been pumping some of that water out. And of course, in August, we'll be wondering where the rain went. So we needed to kind of look at that. And we've got estimates on the concrete for that. And then we also need to look at estimates for the concrete itself we've had. And so we're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of about sixty thousand dollars. And that includes all the wire and things associated with that as well. What we really need to do, and Dave brought it, they've brought it up, is kind of have a better idea of what this total project looks like. Because we really haven't talked about it in those terms. We've kind of just kind of put pieces together and say, here's what it is.
Seem like we're doing one piece at a time and.
Yeah.
Where, what's it all going to lead up to? What's, you know?
Yeah. So we're, we're working on putting together a better kind of presentation on that. So we have a better fuller idea of what that looks like.
That was my concern.
Yeah. I mean, that's a legitimate concern because we really have to talk about.
And what's already funded and what's still to be funded in Phase Two or whatever.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. And we have a challenge grant out for Phase Two, which is an eighty thousand dollar challenge grant that we're trying to find. But that, you know, that doesn't even factor into what we're doing now. We're just trying to get through this phase, including the parking and the other accoutrements. So what we need to do now, what we're asking for now, so we can keep moving, is to look at the concrete and say, okay, we can improve up to sixty thousand. And we're going to bring you back a better idea of what this looks like in total, because it doesn't, it does feel like we're just kind of bits and bobsing it. That, that isn't really helpful. It doesn't give a very clear picture. From how we've been talking about funding it, you know, a large chunk of it, over a hundred thousand already has been spent from that, from the privately raised money. And then the sixty-three thousand that's still there will be also spent here. But the other portions of it, we've talked about using our capital improvement funds, which includes the four hundred and twenty thousand from, it's got injected into it from the COVID relief money. So, you know, we'll, we'll bring you back a better picture of that because we do need a better.
Right. I think, I think the public needs to know.
Yeah, I agree. I don't disagree with you. So we're ready to move. We still need to purchase some concrete.
Right.
We at least got to fix the road in Washington. It's kind of tore up from the water, water main replacement. So. So what we'd ask for tonight is expenditure up to sixty thousand for the Community Plaza Concrete and all the associated things with that. And then we will bring you back a better picture of kind of where we think everything's going to be.
So just for, from, for clarity, for, and for respect to David and his questions, where is that sixty thousand dollars coming from?
So yeah, that'll come out of, out of the capital improvement fund right now. And then the sixty, the sixty-three thousand that's still at the community foundation that was privately raised will also be deposited into that fund. So in effect, it's paying for this.
It's paying for it.
Yeah.
Okay. Does that help provide a little clarity?
Provide some clarity with this particular.
Sure, right.
I'd like, yeah.
We'll, we'll bring you back the rest of it so you can kind of see what else we're talking about.
Right.
There's, there's some, definitely some costs that are going to have to come out of that.
Yeah, there's going to be some, yeah, there's going to be some costs yet, I think.
And yet.
It's a big project. It's raising money. It's not just a little thing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and we need to be real, I think, the public, we just need to be real clear on it. So.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve staff recommendation to allow staff to approve concrete expenditures up to sixty thousand dollars for the Community Plaza Project.
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item six, forward invoices totaling seventy-five dollars and ten cents.
Sir, this was an oil change and rotating of tires for police vehicle.
Any questions or comments? Would somebody care to make a motion to approve payment of the seventy-five dollars and ten cent expenditure? Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. All those abstaining.
Abstaining.
All those opposed, motion carries. Approved. Now on to discussion items. Our twenty twenty-two budget relative to personnel expenditures. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So apologize for getting this out late. It was one of those things we had to do a little bit more number crunching than I had time to do over in the weekend. So one of the things we've talked about, of course, is, is retaining employees and being able to fairly compensate them. And especially when we're looking at inflation that's getting close to ten percent. Hopefully it doesn't quite get that high, but we'll see. You know, it's not real feasible for us to just say, here's a cost of living adjustment, you know, nine, half, ten percent across the board. We knew when we came into this year that we were behind a little bit from previous years. So that kind of has a cumulative effect. Of course, in my opinion, our employees are, you know, they are our largest category of expenditure. We're also our greatest asset because if we don't have quality employees, we don't perform well. And so, you know, I think it's in our best interest and we've seen it over the last eighteen months with all the transition we've had to have and positions we've had to fill, how important having quality people is. And so wanted to put together some ideas that are a little bit, well, that are in line with trying to keep people compensated in a fair manner, but also, you know, try to control costs because we understand that that's just not something go willy-nilly and create long-term reoccurring costs with. So what we've got here are a couple of potential options, at least to think about, you know, one or more of those, if that's something you can look at. We already did the, the insurance thing. We appreciate that. That was one of the things that people look at is, is insurance and benefits. Maybe not so much with the younger crowd. They think they're bulletproof and invisible. So they don't always look at insurance as much as what they get paid every day. But, you know, that's still, it's still an important thing for, for attracting people. Cost of living, you know, we kind of toyed around with the different options as far as, you know, what you would do with, you know, percentages, what we typically look at. But in this case, you know, I, I think I would recommend looking at doing just a dollar cost of living adjustment, a flat amount versus a percentage. Of course, what that does is that impacts people at the lower end of the spectrum a lot more than it does at the higher end. But that's fair. I think that those people are probably the ones who need more assistance as far as dealing with the day-to-day inflationary things. So if you did, you know, what, just looking at kind of how the numbers work, if you were to do a dollar colon in January, it would average out to like four point nine percent when you kind of look at everybody in the mix. Now, the person that the lowest paid person who's a part-time, a regular part-time employee, that would actually end up being like a nine percent increase. But for, you know, the top end people, it's one, one and a half percent. So it's, it's a little bit of a trade-off. But again, I think that probably is more fair for, for those people at the bottom of the spectrum because they need probably more assistance on that and feel it more than what we do at the top. So that would be one option there. And I kind of broke out at the bottom in the financial piece, kind of how that looks in different, different categories, where those, where that money comes from. One option to consider too would be potentially looking at like a merit-based bonus. I put in three percent. I thought that was kind of a fair, fair way to look at that and kind of where that averages out. Bonuses, the deal with bonuses is that they don't create long-term reoccurring expenses. I mean, that's not something that happens every day. You could do. You could do one time if you wanted to, if it's something that you felt like was good, you could always continue doing that. It's an option. You know, so we would tie these to performance, performance reviews, last few years, we really haven't been as engaged with performance reviews. We probably should have been in the last five years, probably. We have taken the time to rewrite the performance evaluation and we've talked about re-reconstituting that, restarting it. Some departments have done a better job than others in the past year, police department does an excellent job with performance reviews, they're very on it. But some of the public works departments, they don't do it, and if you don't, you know, push them to do it, they won't, so. We've rewritten the, the performance review to include some other things that we think are important. We've worked on it as department heads, and I had a group to help do that too. But I think tying any kind of, any kind of bonus situation needs to be tied to merit, I think that has to happen, because if you. Just say, you know, we're going to give a bonus, that, that doesn't really get, give you any benefit from that other, that, that's just as, just the same as a kind of COLA. So when we looked at the three percent, you know, the average person would see about thirteen hundred dollars, another one time bonus, which is a pretty good deal. We timed it to look at, you know, kind of the calendar, I looked at where, where the pay schedule works, kind of makes the most sense. July seemed like a pretty good place to put that, it's the middle of the year. If you did a COLA at the beginning of the year, in the middle of the year, you're kind of spacing that out, giving yourself some. A little bit of benefit from feeling like you're consistently giving people something. So that's one option, one thing else, the other thing we looked at was adding a couple holidays to the, to the employee handbook. Good Friday, everybody thinks we're closed anyway, especially if the schools close, they all assume that we're closed. So it's, it's usually a pretty quiet day for us, and so we could potentially add that. I also looked at maybe a personal floating holiday, so that you, you know, if somebody wanted to pick their birthday or whatever day, they could do it as personal holiday. So the, the deal with the, with the holidays, adding two holidays, it would put us up to eleven. It's the same number as the federal government, I think it's actually one more than what the county does now. So you're still, you're not given a bunch of holidays. There's a little bit of added cost aside from the, you know, the lost productivity of a day, giving somebody a holiday. There's about thirteen hundred dollars in on non work duties that have to happen, so we have to pay people to come into the. Water plant, I had to pay them to, to come into the, do the sewer checks and do the electrical checks, we do that on weekends anyway. But there's a little bit of cost associated with that. And of course, if anything breaks during those days, there'd be a call out, it'd be a call out situation versus normal duty day, so. That's an option. One other thing we could look at doing is potentially altering the cell phone compensation policy. Those have really become our primary tools, the, the policy was written in two thousand and ten, and I don't think that was quite as common. But we use these things every day now, and so. Policy provides a stipend to every, every pay period, and that kind of varies, I'm not sure how it's been applied in the past, it seems a little inconsistent to me. You know, any, you can get a stipend anywhere from six dollars to sixteen per pay period. So I would suggest, you know, you, you equalize that a little bit more and say. You know, you could pay department heads twenty dollars a pay period and, and regular full time employees ten dollars a pay period, I think that, it's a nice. A nice gesture and probably more accurate as far as what we use and reflective of what we use our cell phones for, so. Those are just some options that we've kind of come up with, of course, we're open to any other discussion. It's, it's the biggest category of expenditure outside of our debt service, so. It's kind of a key piece when we start putting together the budget. The overall financial impact, if you were to do all of those changes, is a hundred and fourteen thousand for two thousand and twenty three. Of that, sixty five thousand would be tied to the COLA and the holiday pay, so that would be reoccurring, that would just add to the, to normal. Expenditures. The merit bonus wouldn't necessarily do that, it would just be one time thing. And so that's forty seven thousand, and I've broken those down based on the funds from which they come. I don't think that it, you know, if you were to look at doing these, that you would be looking at any kind of property tax increase to offset that. We actually just got the valuation this afternoon. So our value, our valuation went up four point four percent, which is good, it's up to almost twenty thousand or twenty million, excuse me. So nineteen million eight hundred and thirty five thousand one hundred and seventy three dollars, which is eight hundred and thirty five. Thousand dollars more than it was last year, four and a half percent, four point four percent, so. If we were to, for example, to levy the same mill levy, that would generate an additional thirty five thousand, three hundred and forty seven dollars. So just so you have that kind of frame of reference for that. I think just looking at that, we're going to be exceeding the revenue neutral rate. I think that's going to happen, I, I figured that would probably happen anyway. Because of the way that that is structured, it doesn't take into account any kind of growth. So if you wanted to, to fall into that category to be revenue neutral, we would have to reduce the mill levy by about three or four mills. To, to keep that consistent. I don't think that's what we want to do, I, I just wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it, first of all, but. Something to think about when you talk about the revenue neutral rate, which will be something we put together when we bring back the, the first draft in the budget for you. So you'll kind of see what that looks like. And then, of course, we have utility costs too, for some of that, some of that cost goes into utilities, that's how they're paid, so. You know, various, various amounts in that too, so. Those are kind of the things, we're just looking for some feedback on some of these solutions, how, how do you want us to treat some of these things? Cause that will determine how we move forward on the personnel part of the budget creation, so. Just wanted to put it out there and get some discussion.
Are the performance evaluations done? Like, you would do the department heads and then each department head would do everybody underneath that department.
Yeah, that's, that is how they're supposed to be done, yes. We're going to be doing a little bit more training on how to appropriately do these. I think that, again, some, some department heads are more diligent than others. If they haven't been doing it for a while, they're going to need some help.
So I think one thing that can happen pretty easily is everybody gets.
Everybody gets it, right?
Everybody gets their merit, know that.
That is definitely a potential, I mean, you have to, you have to have some pretty serious conversations about is this person really meeting your expectations? And we, again, we have a lot of new people too, so that. They, they are supposed to be getting more evaluations in their cycle, they're supposed to have a ninety day evaluation, six month, one year. Not necessarily doing that in all cases. So we need a little bit more training with that, for sure.
Or even one department gives everybody, and then the next department's.
Right.
A little more strict on how they're giving out their.
Well, yeah, that's true too, I mean, a different department has.
I feel like it could cause almost conflict, you know, like almost.
Yeah, for sure, but I think you got to tie it to something, you know, I think, you know, holding people accountable to our values and mission is really important. That's how we reinforce that. So, yeah, it'll be a little bit of a learning process, I'm sure, and I'm sure that most people will probably end up with three percent. If, if we were to go with something like this. It just takes a little bit of time to get people into the rhythm.
Comments?
Floating holidays, that like, might be like a vacation day.
Yeah, essentially works like vacation day, they have to get approval from, from their department head, and then they can declare that a vacation.
That wouldn't be as expensive as the, the one where you kept everybody off the same day, because then you still have people.
Potentially, yeah. Once everybody decided to take June twenty fifth off for some reason.
Right.
Or start a personal day would be nice. So time to go with the. As a benefit, the city employees, you should get more vacation. Council took it away from them. I don't know if anybody knew that, it's on the council mail, but that did happen.
Oh, wow, okay.
I never thought you should take away benefits once you go.
I think. From the, from the reading and the studying I've done, and, you know, the, the, the younger generations. Appreciate more flexibility, you know, and it's a balance with us as a city. Because obviously our services have to run twenty four seven, three sixty five, right? So there's a balance, balancing act there, and that floating holiday might be one of those flexible. Pieces that we could, you know, insert into the, into the mix that would have, be helpful. Maybe with some kind of requirement that they notify what that holiday is going to be, at least sixty days, fifty, thirty days in advance or something like that.
Oh, yeah.
That would give you a chance to restructure, in case there was a whole slew of people wanting to do it the same day. We, we, we still have our, our normal vacation, we have our normal sick days, you know, and those kind of things, so.
Yeah.
So, you know, those are going to cover a lot of those unforeseen days, so to your point, I think that might be fair. You know, from a planning perspective for the department head.
Yeah, that's what I would think, yeah.
I don't know, maybe thirty days, I don't know.
Thirty days, yeah.
Fourteen, I don't know.
You would need at least a pay period, which would be fourteen days.
So the one thought I'd have is, I, I like pretty much everything you're suggesting here with the, the merit bonus. Because it's so experimental and you have so much training, my first thought is, would we be better off going with a little lower percentage as we started?
Can do that, yeah.
Cause it, again, like, like Barney said, you don't want to offer something and then take it back the next year. So, so if we ease into that just a bit more, we still have the ability to, even if, you know.
Yeah.
Not take it back, yes, it's what I'd be worried about.
Yeah.
You know, when we think about those things, you know, what kind of metric components can be put in there so it's less subjective? And more fact based, you know, and I know that's not always easy, and it depends on the department, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, for, for the PD, it might be pretty easy with how many interactions are you having per shift? And, you know, what's your, what's your, what's your conviction rate, or I, I, you know, whatever that might look like, I don't know, there might be some easy metrics. To, to snag there, but some other departments, it might be a little harder, but the more metric based you can make. The less subjective it becomes.
And I like the idea that you have with it, and especially like tying it back to the values of, you know, the.
Yeah.
That we have, have, that's, that's just what occurred to me when I looked at that, is maybe.
Yeah.
We ease into it a little bit more than that.
Fair enough, yeah, that's fair.
You know, and, and I've had experience in, 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 in past employment where. The employee was part of the goal setting process, you know, and you sat down to do your reviews, like, what do you think the goals? What, what goals do you want to have personally? And allow them to, you know, if they want to throw something in there about professional development or something like that. That's another metric that's easy, easily identified, the either, if they needed to take a course or, or, you know. Get some training or do whatever, you know, they either did it or they didn't do it, right?
Yep.
So that's. So maybe that could be.
Yeah, we've, we've worked on the, some of those things that are hard to, you know, we talk about values especially, it gets pretty, pretty squishy, pretty quick. And so you have to be, you have to think about it more in a metric standpoint, and so there's things in there for sure that are very metric driven, but when you talk about. Customer service or something like that, it gets a little bit more squishier, a little more subjective, but I, I agree, I think that you. You could ease into it, if that's something you want to do, you know, knock it down to one percent, one and a half percent, two percent.
Well, it's still. Again, we're, we gotta, we gotta keep it in balance, because it's got to be worth something. You know, it can't be just worth nothing, because, you know, it's got to be worth something, and so, you know, but I certainly agree that. And, and maybe, maybe that's part of the discussion with the department is, it says, look, your bonus is going to be. Part of your bonus is going to be, how did you handle your review process, right?
Yeah, there's some supervision metrics on the department, there's two, there's two depart, there's two evaluations, one's for department heads and one's for, for everybody else. And that is one of the things on there, but I don't think it's quite as specific as how did you do your evaluations, but it's about supervision. Leadership and some of those other qualities that you expect to see, so. Definitely have that.
You know, sometimes it's as simple as someone clocks in at the right time every day.
Be surprised at showing up as. It gets to be more challenging, especially, and I don't want to pigeonhole generations, but sometimes.
Younger, some very younger workers have had challenges. No, I had one of our local employers tell me one time that if he could just get people to show up, he could work with that.
Yeah.
You know, they didn't, they didn't have to be the sharpest, sharpest employee, but if, if they could count on him being there.
Yeah.
You know, I think he was a pretty smart business guy. Anyway, any other com- comments or conversation? So, do you have some, do you have some feedback to?
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure that I understand, so we're, we're, it sounds like we're pretty much in agreement on the holiday thing, that seems pretty straightforward. And then didn't, didn't hear much about the COLA idea.
I think it's great.
And then the merit thing, maybe we walk back the percentage a little bit.
Well, somewhere between, somewhere between one and a half and two and a half percent.
Yeah. And then the cell phone thing, that's more of a kind of a technical change, but. Feel like that's something we could do to make that more equitable for people.
Okay, alright.
Um, that, that. Think so.
Alright. We now are to the city administrators report, Mr. Styles.
Sir, so I wanted to kind of give you an update on auction stuff, we had that back in May. Grossed eighteen thousand one fifty three, got a spreadsheet or a table attached there, kind of shows you. How that broke out, our net proceeds were fourteen thousand fifty dollars and eighty six cents. Highest was the museum, which I don't think surprised anybody, they had the most stuff in there. They netted back ten thousand, just over ten thousand dollars, ten thousand forty two fifty eight. So that went pretty well for them, I know that they've talked about doing some improvements to some exhibits and some of the museum properties. We, we have some areas that need some, some safety issues worked on, and so that's probably where that one is going to end up going. Splash Park, we've kind of taken a look at that, you can, you can see where we've been, we've got Washington Street pretty well. Ready to be, have the main put back in and all that stuff is, is here, or a couple pieces are still arriving, so. We'll get that moving forward, everything kind of slowed down because the rain last two weeks, but. We're going to hopefully pick that back up. If everything dries out a little bit.
Go get some more tonight.
Every day it rains, it kind of makes things a little bit sound. Blue green algae, just give you an update, they closed the reservoir on the second due to the blue green algae.
Kicked me right out of there.
Kicked you out, didn't they? So we've been prepping for that, we, we kind of knew it was coming, we have some signs that we see some stuff that comes in, and I talked with Morgan yesterday about it. And she showed me kind of where we're at, we are starting to see a little bit of that come in. And so we're, we're prepped for it, we kind of knew it was going to happen. Surprised it came as quickly as it did, normally doesn't come until later when it's hotter. But it is what it is, and so we're, we're working on that, and we're prepped for it. We're still looking at some additional treatments, we've met with our engineers and a couple of. Vendors who do chlorine dioxide injection technologies, which is actually pretty affordable. It's not, not complicated thing, it could be pretty easily added. Our engineers are still a little bit skeptical of that, because I think they're looking, I think they're looking for a magic bullet that takes care of everything all at once, instead of. Looking at combinations of different things, and so. We're, we're kind of debating with that a little bit, but we should have something hopefully to move forward, and we'd like to take that to KDHE. To get some approval and hopefully some funding, there's definitely funding available for this, it's an emerging talks and thing. So we're, we're happy to move forward with that, we are looking at it, we are treating it, nothing's getting out of the system. So you can rest assured that the drinking water is in fact safe, even if the green algae is bad at the reservoir. Just, it, it costs us a lot more time, chemicals and effort to, to do that, so. Uh, once we self made, got demolished, and it is, it is done, yeah.
I got a funny story about that.
Yeah. Uh, they've got it, I think they pretty well finished it today. Yeah.
It's up to grade, it's filled in.
And I actually talked with somebody this afternoon about potentially buying that, so we need to have a conversation offline about maybe what that looks like. I haven't, we have not talked about what that property is worth, or what we're willing to sell it for, but I have somebody interested in it, that's a potential option for their business, so. It's not a huge piece of property, but. You know, I'd rather not have to maintain it if we didn't have. you know, I'd rather not have to maintain it if we didn't have to. Uh, we have talked about in the past it being kind of a gateway to the, the, the community closet. We have to deal with the garage that's still there. So I don't know if that's a real viable option.
Not at the moment.
Not at the moment anyhow, but, uh, we'll have to kind of look at that and see how that works out.
But from a safety standpoint, uh, you know, and, uh, appearance standpoint, it, it really looks a lot nicer that the big tree's gone and it's pretty open.
The open lock right now. That's great. Uh, things that didn't make it onto the report, but, add, uh, we got notification on that K dot grant that we submitted for Adam Street, the cost share grant there. Uh, it was the weirdest, weirdest letter I've ever gotten from K dot, cause it didn't specifically say that we were rejected. It just said that there were so many things that they couldn't fund everything. And then kind of gave the impression that we weren't selected, but didn't actually come out and say it. So, I think we were, cause it wasn't, uh, Euro E one, you know, it's not a, you were awarded packet. So we'll follow up with them just to make sure that we didn't get awarded, uh, didn't get the wrong letter, but it's very strange. So we didn't get that one as far as I'm concerned right now on Adam Street and we haven't heard back on the one for, uh, finishing up here on the highway or by Sonic. That one's still to be determined. So that's out there. Uh, we also got our sales tax for April and it was substantially higher than anyone expected. Sixty percent higher than it was last year. A hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and nine, four hundred dollars and ninety-one cents. Normally we've seen things this year at about seventy, uh, seventy thousand dollars. Uh, so this was, sixty percent higher than it was for the same month last year and puts us, uh, thirty percent above, for the whole year, uh, for twenty twenty-one compared to twenty twenty-two and fifty-one percent higher than the rolling five-year average. So, things are going really well on the, on the retail side. Now, some of that's probably inflation, but you can't all be inflation. Fifty-three thousand dollars doesn't just emerge from inflation. So, I know I haven't paid that much more for my exit dales. So, uh, you know, I, I think that's an indication that the, the retail market has been pretty robust here. We're, you know, car dealerships are moving a lot of product. Hardware stores doing pretty well, uh, existing businesses. And then of course, we've got retail sales on internet transactions. I think that's starting to come in pretty good. Of course, we can't determine what all's in there. We might have access to that specific of information, but, uh, it's great. It's good. It's good.
Good problem to have.
It's a good problem to have. I about fell out of my chair when I saw that. That was much more than I expected. So,
That's.
We'll see if that continues or if that's just a one, one-month blip, but that's the highest one ever recorded. Last year, last, last November, we had a hundred and ten thousand, but this is more than that.
Good news.
Pretty good.
And that is all I had, sir.
Any questions? Okay, that takes us to our final public comment opportunity. And I do not see any members of the public online, nor do I see any present in the room. So we will move on to council comments. Councilman By.
None today.
Not even the funny story about the building.
So when they were tearing down that building, it, you know, we could see it from our dealership window. As it was coming down, there was a raccoon on the very top of the, like in the top, I'm not even joking. It jumped out of a window, onto the ground. And about scared one of the worker guys. So I started chasing this raccoon all down Main Street. Or like in the little area where they were attacked. It was the funniest thing I've ever seen. I don't think they ever caught him. So there's a raccoon running.
Raccoon running around his home.
So, the raccoon in the red brick building and the possum at the museum. The, the hits just keep on coming.
I don't know how it didn't die because it jumped out of the top floor and landed right on the ground.
Can't blame him.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Funny story about the raccoon.
Councilman McCarty.
I'd like to see us take a look at, uh, the two hundred block of West B Street. Really bad on that section with the trash truck drives. And also, I know there's not much traffic on the street, but North Cedar is a bit of some work.
Yeah, we knew that one.
There's a great big, rough, um, west of B where the trash truck has to pick up trucks. I don't know how they fix it, but I mean, there's got to be some.
Yeah, so with those streets, South Lincoln's probably the worst. But B streets, there's some sections there too. So the base on there, that street is completely eroded.
Right.
It's just like squishy. Yeah. Uh, and so anytime the trash track is a great example, cause it stops, pivots, does different things on it. It, it heaves it. And so we get these whole, uh, the solution to that is, is probably to replace the whole street, but, uh, because we know it's bad for the entire length. But what we'll do is we dig those out, uh, bridge them back up with AB three or some rock concrete, crushed concrete. Uh, and then we can go back in and, and do some cold mix top on it, just to kind of get.
Exactly. It's kind of bad. I drive that a lot to deliver there.
Got a lot of spots around town.
And, and Cedar Park, that's, some people have been complaining about.
Oh, yeah. I've heard those guys. Yeah. And so those, uh, the deal with that one is that there's clay underneath. Has, uh, it's kind of a neat situation. I've never seen it on a road. It's, it's taken and heaved the entire valley gutter. And so the gutters are actually higher than the crown of the road in some spots. And so really the only solution to that is to take it all out. That of course is pretty expensive and that worries. Especially with Cedar, there's only, like four, five, five, six houses in the worst part of that stretch. So it kind of, kind of gets down to a cost benefit thing, but, it's not good. I agree.
That's my one.
Yeah, I just wanted to give kudos to the fifth grade class for their great garden that got going out there. I think they sold, did they, did they give some fruit, produce to people in town and stuff already?
I think the Main Street ministries.
Give some and sold some, right?
And they did a fundraiser to pick up line.
They did, sold some, yeah. Yeah. So, and they've got a plan for taking care of it during the summer too. I asked one kid about it. So it's, it's pretty exciting to see that happen.
It's a neat garden now.
It really is. It's a lot bigger than I thought it was.
Very lush right now.
Probably needs a little more attention since all that rain.
Yes.
Yeah. Agreed. Yeah, for sure. Councilman Driggers.
No funny story for me today.
All right. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.